Steve, does Mike have the invite?
He should have it.
He texted me, so you might want to send it back to him.
Is Eileen not in here?
No, she's here.
I think Eileen's in the public side of it because I see her in her attendees and not as a panelist.
I can't do the board link and I'm not seeing Mike on the other side. And I'll promote Eileen.
Let me call him and see if he's having trouble.
See if he can, Ed, see if he can just go into the public side and I'll promote him.
I just forwarded the email to him, so.
And I came in through the link, but it put me in as an attendee instead of panelist.
He's coming in now.
I'm in twice, so maybe he's in.
He's in.
I gotta rename me.
No, no, you're fine.
John's got to let you run the meeting.
Maybe I'll rename me.
Do that.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I believe everyone's here.
Yes.
If you'd like me to do the instructions.
Please.
Again, this is a virtual meeting of Newtown Township. As we've been doing for the last almost, I guess, eight or nine months, we've been doing these meetings virtually. You can make public comment one of four ways during the meeting. One way is to drop a comment off at the blue box that's outside the main entrance, as if you were coming into the library or the main entrance into the township building. And I have checked that box about 10 minutes ago and there was no public comment in the box. During the meeting, you can raise your hand while in the meeting and you'll be recognized and that's a virtual raise your hand. And we watch for that. If you've called in and used a phone number, there's an option from Zoom that gave you instructions when you called in that you could use to raise your hand. If by chance you forget how to do that or having trouble with either way of raising your hand, you can always send a message to publiccomment@newtown township.org. Again, that's publiccomment@newtown township.org, no spaces. And we monitor that during the public comment sessions, both the one in the beginning and the one at the end. If you happen to be calling in and you've used a phone number, please make sure you identify the phone number in the email message that you send to us with your name so that we can properly recognize you if you would like to speak. Mr. Chairman, those are the instructions. I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Nice. Let me note that the board was in executive session prior to this meeting to discuss one litigation matter, one possible litigation matter, and two personnel matters. With that, I will call the meeting to order and ask Mr. Nice to call the roll.
Mr. Non.
I am here.
Mr. Partridge.
Here.
Ms. Roberts, Lightcap.
Here.
Mr. Russo.
Here.
Mr. Altieri.
Here.
Your engineer, solicitor, and manager are here.
Thank you, Mr. Nice. In our moment of silence tonight, I'd like to all, have us all for a prayer of Thanksgiving. It's been, to say the least, a very unusual year. We've been going at this now in our strange state, I'll say, for the last eight months. We've made it this far. We've still got a little bit of ways to go. While not been normal, I think we've strived to maintain as much normalcy as we could while still, you know, recognizing the things that are before us. So I just want to have, as we approach Thanksgiving, if it'd be appropriate, we're all pray a prayer of Thanksgiving tonight and just, you know, in our thoughts, keep all that, you know, just thanks for where we are now and the strength to continue to get through this. So please bow your head and... Okay, with that, our next item is the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda or consideration of any additions or changes.
Make a motion to approve the agendas presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion is made by Supervisor Altieri, seconded by Supervisor Russo to approve this evening's agenda as written. Any further questions or discussions from members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this point, on the agenda, we have public comment for agenda items only. I do not believe we have, at least none's been presented to me so far, Mr. Nice, is that correct?
You mean in regards to emails?
Yes, we've received no emails or anything like that.
I'm going to verify that. No, there's none in the, there's no emails in the box and I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, so with that, we will move on then. Any hands raised either? So we'll move on. Next item on the agenda are the minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our November 9th, 2020 meeting or consideration of any changes or corrections or whatever.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made by Supervisor Altieri, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, Lightcap, to approve the minutes as written. Any further questions or discussions from members of the board? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda, we have reports. I'll quickly run through these. I know some of these folks are online as participants. If they wish to jump in and amend their reports, they can raise their hands, I suppose. We have a monthly report from Chief Lund from Police Department. I don't see his hand raised, so I think we've all had a chance to review that. We have a monthly report from George Sharitz. I don't see George's hands raised. We have a monthly report from Andy Rescheck. I don't see Andy online, do I? So we have our monthly report from Rich Laffiata, and I don't see his hand raised, so we can move ahead there. We have a monthly report from Arlene Caruso. Arlene is online, but I don't have any, no hand raised. Let me stop there for a second. Does any board member have any questions for any of those folks regarding their reports? Hearing none. Next on the agenda, we have a report from the engineer, Eileen Nelson. Eileen, do you have anything to add to your report?
Just with respect to the Clearbrook project, the contractor finalized the notice to residents and indicated they would be distributing them today. They expect, as I put in the report, a start date of November 30th. Also, with respect to the Glendale Drainage Complaint, our application was received by Delaware County Conservation District and they inquired and asked for us to provide a brief summary and a grant evaluation form, which was submitted to them on Friday. They acknowledged receipt and said that they would be reviewing applications, I believe, December 3rd, and letting us know. It looks like we were one of two that submitted. And they asked for a slight adjustment in the cost estimate as well because the funding they had for the two projects was exceeded by about $6,000 for the ask. So we made those adjustments and are hopeful that we will hear back positively. But backing up to the Clearbrook culvert, along with my report, is a request for additional services. If you recall back when the project was awarded, it was requested that we investigate the form lining, which was a little painful, trying to get information and evaluate that change order, or potential change order, which we ended up not approving, so that we went with the plain end walls. But that effort was not anticipated in the original proposal. And added to that, the fact that we have an investigation to complete for the depression in the road that's not associated with the culvert replacement but is adjacent. We are making that request for continuing and completing the project.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for our engineer?
Yeah, I know, Eileen, this is Leonard. I know that in your report, you said that the surveys for the stormwater surveys have been collected and you guys are crunching the data. I guess I have two questions. The first one is a clarification real quick. Is that separate and apart from the drainage study you're also doing?
No, that's part of it.
Okay, so what is the, what is the expected delivery date on that information?
I believe what we discussed most recently was to have both the Heights and the Upper St. Albans areas completed by the end of the year.
Okay.
And we're still on track to do that.
Perfect. That's all I had.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for our engineer? Hearing none. Thank you, Eileen. Our next on the agenda is a report for our manager, Mr. Nice.
Yes, before I start, I would say that we probably want to approve the added services for the engineer that she requested as a board action because you've approved her doing the work for the other part.
Would we add to do that now or would that be better to end?
We could do it under new business. I just don't want it to be forgotten.
Okay, so we can add that under new business 11.9, I guess.
Yep.
Okay.
So the update that I have for you this evening is related to our leaf collection. George and I were speaking this afternoon and the great news is, is that they're on target. They had built in a couple days to be able to address some issues and it's worked out perfectly so far. So they've, they're 100% on target for their time in regards to collecting in the places they needed to collect. However, the first week of collection, they were collecting, and I'm going to look over here because my brain forgets, they were looking, they were collecting in Florida Park, Newtown Heights, the Avenue area, Largemont, that's Surrey to Northline, though on the north side of Westchester Pike and Dogwood and Valley View sections. When they were collecting there, if you remember, we've had an incredibly warm fall and our leaves were not actually falling off the trees as quickly as we had, I guess, hoped for. And so we only collected 50% of our normal capacity or normal collection in that area. George keeps good records and he knows how many truckloads he takes from each one of those areas and how many cubic yards. And so one of our suggestions would be that we would consider for just that section that I read to you, going back and doing a, potentially a second drive-through the week of December 14th.
If we have the time and we've met our obligations on everywhere else on the dates that we set, I would have no problem doing that. I'm happy to hear from all the board members on that, too.
Good with me. I'm fine.
Any other comments? Everybody good with that?
Yeah, I'm fine.
So we will notify those residents and those residents only that will be coming back to do that because it was such an unusual thing. Mr. Chairman, that's pretty much my report this evening.
Mr. Nice, could you give us an update on where we are with the easement for Episcopal?
Mr. Chairman, I can, I would, if I can, if it's acceptable to you, I'd like to defer, I believe Mr. Sakura is on. He has been working with this, promoting him right now to be a panelist.
Go ahead, Rich.
You're muted, Rich.
Sorry about that. So I understand that there's some confusion, at least in some members of the public regarding what the township supervisors approved with respect to investigating potential condemnation in prior meetings. And as that relates to our access to the 50-acre nature preserve that is adjacent to the Toll Brothers Development known as Listener and Episcopal Academy to the north. The, from the time we took possession of the 50-acre nature preserve, there was an access easement by deed and on the land development plans for access from Route 252 to the nature preserve by way of an existing cart path, a driveway. That's existed there prior to the development, prior to the development of Episcopal Academy, prior to the development of Listener, and it still exists and we still have an easement to it. Nobody's ever disputed that the township has an easement to access the 50-acre nature preserve by way of that cart path, that easement. There's just, there's never been a dispute about that. There was some discussions and some concerns raised by Episcopal Academy as to whether an easement to the benefit of the township meant also for the benefit of the public, meaning that, you know, there was not a dispute that, of course, the township as the owner of the nature preserve could bring maintenance vehicles or police vehicles or emergency vehicles back there. But there was a question as to whether the public could use that. In response to those concerns, I relayed some Pennsylvania Supreme Court case law that said if the township owns the property for the benefit of the public, then the easement that it owns is for the benefit of the public as well. So ever since I produced that case law, that's never been discussed as a problem or a concern. And while there may have been some growing pains in the beginning as to who was accessing what and where, that's never been a problem. We have the access, we have an easement, and that's not what the prior discussion regarding condemnation was about. So what was that about? Well, the township in evaluating this tremendous asset, which is known as this 50-acre preserve, determined that to, it could, it could increase the configuration, the decrease invasive species, increase the usability for birdwatching and all different sorts of passive enjoyment for the township. But there could be grants available to assist in improving it. In order to be able to access those grants, it became apparent that unless there was increased access for the disabled, we might not be able to access those grants. So we started upon an investigation as to how could we use that access for the benefit of disabled folks to be able to get there. And that's, you know, we've been in discussions with the homeowners association, we've been in discussions with Episcopal Academy, we've never reached an agreement that satisfied anybody as to what to do. So one of the things that we've considered is condemning additional land adjacent to that access or that may somewhat overlap with that access to provide either a parking area in the nature, in the area of Route 252 and the intersection with this part, this driveway, or some sort of diagonal or parallel parking along the side of this access. The argument being that, of course, you know, an access easement doesn't necessarily provide parking capability. It's not an easement to park there. And so that, nobody said to condemn anything. Nobody, first of all, nobody gave anything away to anybody and nobody's condemning anything. It was, it's an evaluation and the township authorized the township manager to engage professionals to evaluate what the cost would be if we were to do various configurations of the additional parking to enhance the access that already exists. To the extent that there is a confusion as to whether we quote "gave away" that access, I think perhaps some confusion may arise from the fact that initially, this was always, when this plan was approved, vehicular access was never, other than township vehicles, was never envisioned in this area. It was supposed to be passive enjoyment accessed by a walking trail for cars that were parking down on Goshen Road, walk up the trail or bike up the trail and then turn west at the access driveway. That is what the original configuration was. Episcopal, early on, before Listener developed the property, asked the township and Listener or Toll Brothers to consider turning the path before it reached the access driveway. And in Episcopal's mind, that would decrease the amount of folks that would just walk up to the very adjacent edge of their sports fields. So they wanted to just, you know, have that separation to the extent possible. And for the township, it deconflicted pedestrian and bicycle traffic with potential vehicle traffic on the path. So the township was agreeable to amending the plan to allow the path to turn west and continue on to the nature preserve solely by, on the path, solely by bike and pedestrian access. That was, Listener was agreeable to that. Listener, Toll Brothers agreed to construct that. There was no additional cost to the township. And of course, the township didn't extinguish or give up any other rights with respect to the driveway access. I understand that perhaps there's confusion by some folks in the public as to that point, but it's just simply what I've stated is the case. So we have access, we have vehicular access, we have bike and pedestrian access. People are allowed to use the nature preserve. They're encouraged to use it passively. There's no trespassing signs that delineate the boundaries of the, I don't know if there are no trespassing as much as just their signage that delineates the boundaries between Episcopal and the township. The township folks that are enjoying it are discouraged from trespassing on Episcopal property. And, and that's where we are. Recently, and when I say recently, I mean, last week, the township was presented by a township resident with a plan that perhaps could allow parking down closer to the nature preserve without having to condemn property. And I think the township's going to evaluate with that with all other options. And if it's, if it's, you know, economically better and environmentally better and access-wise better, then I'm sure that's going to be considered. But I think right now, this is an evaluation process. And unless you guys direct the township administration to do otherwise, that process is ongoing.
Mr. Chairman, you're muted.
I know. Thank you, Mr. Secure. Okay, Mr. Nice, anything else?
That's all I had.
All right. Moving on then, bills, item number 10.
I had a question for Steve.
Okay, Mr. Altieri.
The first one is, how are we looking with the road dedication policy?
We're still working through that. We need to get together. I was actually out last week and obviously this week being Thanksgiving is a short week. Hopefully we'll be able to get it early part of next week and start getting something that you guys can start having a chance to look at.
Perfect. And then in regards to the leaves, for the neighborhoods that the township has already picked up that are, is not part of that December 14th second go-around, for those residents that are piling the leaves still out on the street or, you know, on the curb, what is the township doing about that? I've been getting a lot of questions, you know, are we just leaving it there and thinking that the snowplows are taking it away? And when I say "we" meaning the residents.
Well, I mean, hopefully not. Actually, if it's in the street, our codes department will be reaching out to folks and reminding them that it needs to be moved because it can't stay in the street. That's not, it's a hazard to be in the street. It also fills in particularly in neighborhoods that have stormwater. It will go into the stormwater drains and that causes a whole nother problem. So we're hoping that people aren't doing that. That's why we've, when we sent out the letter, we've offered for people to bag those leaves and bring them to the township building and really encourage people to do that. And there is, it is open during the day for that purpose. And so we're prepared to do that.
And you kind of broached the second question or the third question I was going to ask on this regarding the leaves. So I obviously, in the Heights, I was one of those houses that had two full beautiful Japanese maples until the week after you guys came. So I bagged 10 bags full of leaves and dumped them off Monday morning at the township building. So I don't know if this is more a question for you or if it's a question for George, but just out of curiosity, you know, how many, you know, what would be the tracking number of that? How many bags have been dropped off, I guess, since the township has opened that up? I'm just curious if a lot of residents are taking advantage of that.
You're right. That's a George question. I'd be shooting really in the dark. So let me go ahead and allow George to, actually, I think he's raised his hand. So George, if you would like to go ahead, you're muted, but if you unmute yourself, you should be able to talk.
Thank you. Yeah, it's George Sharitz, Public Works Director. So we are right now north of 150 bags that have been dropped off. I think we were at 157 as of today.
Perfect. And George, I just want to say, and I know, you know, I normally don't speak for the board, none of us do, but I think that they're all going to be in agreement with the fact that what you guys have been doing this year in regards to leaf collection is extremely commendable. I know that there is a vocal group of individuals who are upset, but I think that all of us understand that the health and safety of our public works department is key, especially as we go into these winter months where we might have snow and might need you guys out there. And, you know, we're talking about leaves versus people's health and safety. And I think that while there are frustrations, and again, I was one of those, right? I had two full trees. And I get the frustration of many, but I ask the residents of this township to please remember that we're talking about individuals who have families. We're talking about individuals who have served this community honorably and admirably for years. And some of the things that I'm hearing and seeing regarding leaf collection nonetheless is sad. So George, I think that your entire team should know that this board is behind them 100% and we appreciate everything that you guys are doing this year.
Yes.
Thank you. We're very grateful for that.
Yes, thank you, George. Any other questions for Mr. Nice before I move on? Are you good, Leonard?
I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Super. Okay, moving on, bills, item number 10. I had the opportunity this evening's meeting to review the bills on our check register A dated today in the amount of $74,411.51. And it is my motion that I, that we approve the bills in said amount. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by myself, seconded by Supervisor Partridge to approve the bills on check register A dated today in the amount of $74,411.51. Any further questions on the bills from members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Well, that brings us to new business. The first item is consider approving the 2021 budget. And I believe I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Nice and who will take it over.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So just a real quick history where we've been and I'm going to be very brief. As you know, we started presenting to you early September, actually, I think a little bit in the end of August, even some different pieces related to the budget. And you've had a chance to see not only all of the detail behind that and that, but tonight, we're really kind of looking at this from the high level. We've advertised it. We've given people an opportunity to see it, ask any questions and make any comments related to it. ask any questions and, and make any comments related to it. We do have a quick presentation tonight that's just showing particularly the general fund. And we're going to just go through that real quick and then leave it up to the board to take any action it wishes to take this evening. Yeah, there's Rich. Rich is going to go and walk us through this part of the presentation.
So if everybody remember back on October 25th, October 26th, the board approved advertising the 2021, 2021 proposed budget with revenues and expenses of $10,663,000. As you can see, we're currently sitting at revenues of $9,998,000. This is all revenues other than the use of fund balance. In addition, since the 26th, the board has gotten a chance to review salary and wage adjustments with the township manager and made some suggestions themselves. This resulted in approximately an $18,000 decrease in total expenditures, which brings our total 2021 proposed budget expenditures to $10,615,000, leaving a gap of about $616,000. So, so throughout the year, we really tried to bucket our expenses into two different buckets. We have our one-time expenses and then we have our ongoing expenses. One, one-time expense that we have discussed throughout the budget process of using fund balance for will be a $508,000 debt service payment. This represents the, the road program 2020 payment. If you recall, we actually have a double road program debt service payment in the year 2021. After this liquid fuels dollars actually get funds freed up and this $508,000 debt service would move over to the liquid fuels fund. So if the board would choose to use fund balance, it would bring our, our gap down to about $108,000. So the next item that we've discussed using fund balance for was the two police vehicles. They both total about $106,000. They're also, we would categorize them as one-time expenses. And this would further reduce our gap down to about $2,000 if the board would choose to use fund balance to fund these. So finally, the remaining $2,000, we would categorize as an ongoing expense that we would need to build into the budget in, you know, 2022 and moving forward. The board could use fund balance to balance this. If they do, that brings us to a zero dollar gap. And Steve, if we go on to the next slide. And if the board would choose to use fund balance to fund the three previous items I just talked about, that would raise our revenues to $10,615,231, matching our expenses and balancing the budget. So that was a very, very high overview of the general funds. And we just kind of wanted to open it up to board comments and questions at this point, but I hope to get the budget passed tonight.
Board members, go ahead, Tina.
I'm sorry, if we use this $10,615,231, how much is left in our fund balance?
You give me one second. I have that paper right here because I knew that was going to come up. So if we choose to use the $616,000 in fund balance to, to fill the gap using the projected numbers that we're anticipating in 2020, it's going to leave about 300, or I'm sorry, $3.1 million in fund balance in the general fund budget.
Okay. And, and with this, I'm sorry, I misspoke. I meant the 616, not 10. We're not taking $10 million.
No.
So I apologize. I got a little dyslexic with the numbers there for a second. And then my other question was by using, by, by using this 616 within that, within our budget, just refresh my memory, we are still funding our, our vehicle replacement program and the, the monies that we've always set aside in the last five years, I guess it is.
So the vehicle replacement program, the vehicle replacement program actually got removed in the 2020 budget. So this $106,000 is actually not built into the general funds budget anymore. So we would take fund balance to balance it for the 2021 so we could get police vehicles.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Hey, Rich, just off of Tina's question, the fund balance at the end of the year, I, I believe would be somewhere around 6 million. Understanding that we have a policy where some of that's restricted, but wouldn't the fund balance be about six or six point something?
Yes, Ed, you're correct. I'm sorry, Tina, I misspoke. We actually have a fund balance policy that, that keeps 25% of our fund balance in reserves. After that, that's where we hit about the 3.1 million, but Ed is correct. At the end of the year, we're projecting to have about $6.3 million in fund balance.
This year.
This year, correct.
And then next year, we would be looking at closer to about 5.7.
That is correct, yes.
Yeah. And, and if anything came up, I mean, I can never see this, but where we need it in excess of the unrestricted amount, I mean, the restricted amount is a board policy. I mean, that, that could simply be, be changed by policy if we ever needed to tap into that money.
Correct. Actually, the whole purpose of having that money is so that when an emergency happens, the board has the freedom to do what it needs to do.
Um, I understand that Steve, but I'm just saying it's restricted. We can unrestrict it if we want it to. That's all I'm saying.
Correct. The board can take that action. I just wanted, I, I'm just basically saying that the board has the authority to move it wherever it needs to move it.
Yep.
So after this action, if we were to do this, we still have roughly half of our budget in essentially reserve. You know, half of our budget amount. You're going to look at our budgets 10, 6. You're telling me at the end of the year, we're going to have 5, 7 in, in reserve. Well, you know, we're, so we're having half of our budget in reserve essentially.
Yeah, typically we would move that remaining 3 million over to the capital. We just haven't done that in light of COVID, not knowing what we needed.
Right. And we're still getting two new police vehicles this year. And we are doing everything else that we do every other year. We haven't taken anything out of the budget. We haven't cut anything out of the budget. We've simply, you know, maintaining the same level of service to residents that we're always doing. And if we can use the fund balance this year, we have no tax increases, as I understand this.
Yeah, I, I just would speak to be very clear that the township would not be issuing a tax increase. However, I just want to be clear, based on the reassessment, there might be people who will be paying more taxes based on how the reassessment handle. But I just, and some people may be paying less. And so I just, I'm always fearful of just saying there's no tax increase and somebody's listening goes, hey, wait a second, my taxes went up X, X percent, but it would not be because the township increased what it was collecting in taxes.
Right. And that has nothing to do with us. That would be the county that is doing the reassessment. We're not reassessing.
Nothing imposed by the township, John, right?
Yes, as proposed, the township's not raising your taxes, but what the county's doing to reassessment, we don't have any control over.
Can I just, can I just ask one more question while this is still up? This use of fund balance for the debt, Rich, this $508,000, that's on that, that one bond that we already had, correct?
That is actually for the 2020 road program.
Right. So then that, that's the lap, that retires that debt, this 508, or do we have another debt?
Actually, the 2016 road program debt is retired in the liquid fuels, which frees the liquid fuels dollars up. So this 508 would actually move from the general fund to the liquid fuels.
Okay.
So this is actually our first year of the 2020 road program debt service payment, but it's actually the 2016 road program debt that's retired.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I guess I got to say Steve Rich, in, in light of what we've gone through this year, and I guess saying we're still not out of it, but to be able to maintain the same level of service that we've been able to maintain, get to the end of the year, still preserve our, essentially our fund balance for the most part and not have any new township tax increase. I mean, I think you guys have done a, a, a great job, an amazing job, if I, if I, you know, don't say. Because, you know, it just seems to me that, that we're still providing a high level of service and we're not penalizing people for it at this point. You know, we're still keeping your taxes where they need to be.
The other thing that's good too, is just piggyback off of that, Mr. Chairman, is that we're not just doing a 0% to do a 0%, we're also investing in different services and personnel and material that's going to benefit everybody here in the community. Obviously, the one that I'm the most excited about, as everybody knows, is the full-time director of communications we got coming in. So I look forward to that person getting up and running. So yeah, I echo what John, what the chairman said to Steve and to Rich. Thank you for everything.
Yeah, no, you know, later on in the agenda, we're going to be bringing in two public works people. So we are still as a township maintaining the high level of service, not raising the taxes in, in, in the face of this, you know, unbelievable pandemic, which for the most of us is, you know, nothing we've ever seen in our entire lifetime. And I'm getting up there in age, so.
If I can just ask, it's, it's somewhat related to this. For Mr. Nice, what is the status of the county reassessment? Are they, I understand the only way it would be stopped now is through a court order since it was issued through the court, but where are they in fixing the mistakes that they had with, that they encountered with the commercial properties across the county and all the other fund that they're encountering?
Rich, are you still on?
I'm still here.
Yeah, Rich, I'm, Rich actually attended a meeting, was it last, two weeks ago?
That is correct.
That actually, while we were having this meeting, that was related to that. And I'm going to let him give you just a short answer to that. What I know is basically they're still moving forward. We're hoping to have something middle of December that we can count on. They told us it would be sooner than that, but we're, I'm not so sure, but go ahead, Rich.
Yeah, so pretty much to sum the meeting up, what they said was that the school, some of the school districts within Delaware County and Delaware County itself are having some disagreements about the commercial properties. They're trying to work through it, but from what they know, they need to give us a number by December 1st, our final 2021 overall assessment. That number may get revisited later on, but they're still on track to give us our number on December 1st of 2020.
Thank you.
Any other board members have comments or questions with the budget?
I have comments. I'd like to offer a motion though, John.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2021 budget with operating expenses and revenue balanced at $10,615,231. Also considering using, within that budget, $616,495 of, of fund balance to, to bring that to a balanced budget and, and also mention no tax increase for our residents. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
This was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Altieri to approve the 21, 2021 budget as presented.
Chairman, if I might, I don't hate to cut you off, but I just want to make sure that the motion includes all of the other funds as well as presented.
Yes, Steve, I, I said 2021 budget as presented and then just highlighting the operating budget. But it includes all the budget.
Includes all the, the streetlight fund and the hydrant fund and things like that.
Everything, everything's in there.
And you're in agreement with your second here, Mr. Altieri, with that?
I am, Mr. Chairman.
Fantastic. Okay. Any further questions or discussions amongst the board on this item? Hearing none. All those that favor the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Yay, we have a budget. Outstanding. Well done.
December 1st.
Thank you. This is, this is awesome. All right, let's move on. Next item on the agenda is consider approving the waiver of a conflict letter for staff working with municipal authority contingent upon Newtown Township's municipal authorities approval. And Mr. Nice, shed some light on this for us.
So over the last, well, probably the last three years for sure, but basically over the last four years for sure. But really, since I've been here, I've been serving as your township manager and pulling kind of double duty and doing executive director, operations manager of the municipal authority. From time to time, things come up that put me in conflict between the municipal authority and the township. And I have always taken a stance that the township is the one that really has hired me and taken that direction. And I take my direction from you. However, there have been times that I've been put kind of in the middle and it makes it hard for me to do my job properly for either one of you because I know information that is shared, particularly in executive session sometimes, that puts me in a spot. And so that's what this is basically saying. And what it does, what this letter would do, as I understand it, would basically say that my first responsibility is always to you. And that if there was a conflict, I would have to step out of the situation. And so that's the purpose of it. And it really requires both you and the municipal, the municipal authority to act on it. They did get it at their last meeting, but they had gotten it to be basically just before their meeting that day. They did not act, but they did give authority for me to continue to function in my role until they could look at it at their next meeting, which would be the first Monday in December. It is on here and I'm going to leave it at that. If you have any further questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Anyone have any questions?
Good.
Well, yeah, I don't know if we want to, we want a motion to put on the table for discussion or do you want to have discussion before? I'll offer a motion.
Go ahead, Ed.
Or discussion. So I'll make a motion to approve the waiver of conflict for staff working with municipal authority contingent upon Newtown Township's municipal authorities approval. And as part of that motion, I would also ask for a roll call vote on this, if it gets a vote.
That's fine. Is there a second to Mr. Partridge's motion?
Yeah, okay, where am I?
Okay, second was received by Mr. Russo, I believe. So the motion's been made and seconded to approve the waiver of conflict letter for staff working municipal authority contingent upon the, or, yes, whatever it says there. Mr. Nice, this is not just you though, right? This is other staff members, Mr. Lafayette or public works people, things like that, correct?
Well, that's true. I would say that probably where the difficulty comes in is in actually the, the day-to-day operations, if it's in direct conflict with what the township wants to do. Typically, that's not the case with our operations folks. They're just going out and doing what needs to be done for them. The, the conflict most likely is between Rich and I most of the time. But if anybody's, if, if for, for some reason you were not to approve this, then I would say any township employee who is made the operating manager or whatever title they give it would be, would potentially have the conflict because they are serving, their first responsibility is to serve the township.
Right.
That's the question that I have because the way that I read this, and I by no way, shape or form, am trying to say that we need to have one removed from the other or anything. But this, this agreement, the way that I read it continually references confidential information and that, that will not be shared with other organization and that we recognize this confidentiality. The question and, and concern I would take a step further that I have is what if there is a directive and both boards are in conflict with the directive? So if we tell Steve to do one thing and the municipal authority tells him to do another and they're in conflict, that's, that's, that's always been my concern.
Excuse me, Mr. Altieri, this is Rich Secora. I, I assisted Stephen with this document. The, the purpose is that, you know, what, what the, what the municipal authority tells Stephen would, can be confidential. What you tell Stephen can be confidential, but if there is an, an un, if there's a situation that arises of you just described, Stephen's going to have to take his orders from the township. And if the municipal authority doesn't like that, they're going to have to hire their own guy or exclude Stephen from that particular action. And if the municipal authority doesn't like that, they're going to have to hire their own guy or exclude Stephen from that particular action.
Okay.
Yeah. Len, are you done?
You can go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, well, just, just playing off what Len says. So, I mean, whether the information or directive is either in conflict or there's a potential conflict. You know, in my opinion, I, I, I think we should remove any possibility of conflict where we can. I mean, that, that, that's my, and, and to, to possibly be given directives, you know, opposing views and, and directives that, that are going to impact the township is, is concerning.
Rich, let me ask you this question. The way that, so now that I know that, I didn't know if it was you or if it was Mr. Catania who helped draft this. So with that information that you just said right there, with that information you said right there, I mean, I still don't see, I don't, I still don't see how that's addressed in this though. That's the only concern that I have is that I'm, I'm trying to protect Steve as well as the township from there being an issue when these boards start, if they start to move in different directions. So if you're comfortable with that, that's great, but I still don't see it in, in this agreement. The way that I read this agreement is that it's only speaking of confidential information. But what you addressed is what my concern is, which is what I raised.
Well, I mean, frankly, you're, the confidential information is the duty to keep information private, right? I mean, that's, that's what that is. It's, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm given information that I'm not supposed to disclose to anybody except for who, who I have authorized to disclose it to. With respect for who he takes decisions from, that's a little bit easier because you could, he could simply say, when, when, when that situation arises, you could say, listen, we are, you, we are stopping your joint executive, executive ship. You know, you, you are essentially, the township has always been the employer of the township manager. It's an appointment, it's a public officer position, that's the role that he serves in. A few years ago, it, it became apparent between the boards of the two organizations that Stephen was also doing things for the municipal authority, but there was no reimbursement to the township for any type of services that the township was providing. Ministerial postage or, or time wise. And it, it just became, when we were sorting through a number of issues, it became apparent that we should formally say, okay, this is, we're going to acknowledge that Stephen has a position with the municipal authority as well. The only issue that we really have to address is that fiduciary duty to keep that information private. If, if there is conflicting direction, if there's just open conflicting direction of we want you to take this action, then Stephen would simply have to resign from one, or be terminated from, from the municipal authority and they would have to go find their own executive director.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think we need an agreement to say if, if that conflict arises, what would happen? I think that's just going to happen automatically. You can still add it if you want to.
No, if you're fine that this is protecting him and the township, then that's all my concerns were from, from the very beginning. And if you're comfortable with that, as, you know, going off of your advice as counsel, then I'm going to do that.
But I think. It really, we really just might come up with, you know, a, a, you know, a, a private meeting that Stephen might have with a supervisor who's a, a committee chair regarding a sewage planning issue that is directly contradictory to what the municipal authority has envisioned for their committee chair of, of, you know, what, what they want to accomplish with the, the actual building of the sewer. And Stephen's stuck in the middle saying, okay, I know I'm talking to my supervisor in a private setting and I'm also, this guy wants to hear from me. Listen, I can't get between you guys. You guys make your plans, you guys make your plans. Obviously, if he, if he knows that there's an, an issue, he can ask, say, hey, listen, can I, can, can I, can I disclose this information? Is this, is this private? But.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, look, I, something that's been going on since 2014, I'm happy it's finally happening now. So if you're fine with it, I'm, I'm good with it. So that's all that, that I have on that.
And, and there hasn't really been a lot of situations where this has come up. It just came up from time to time. Stephen's been able to navigate it to everyone's satisfaction, but just moving forward, it just seemed like to clarify everybody's expectations, when nobody wants to put Stephen in the middle.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, but I think we're heading into, to, to situations where, you know, the, the, the potential for conflict is going to get a lot greater, some of the things that we're talking about and considering into, into the future. So to me, it's still, it, it's concerning. I mean, Steve's, I would look at his primary task as servant to township and having confidential information that, that, that has a potential to conflict, especially when we're taking on issues where there could be a conflict or there's a greater chance for a conflict is, is, is concerning. That's all I have to say.
And I think that's, I think Stephen recognized that and that's why I wanted to, to, you know, highlight the fact that he has this dual role so he can meet your expectations and if the board decides something else should be done, you know, now's probably the time to, to deal with that. We considered whether somebody else in the township could, could, could do the same thing, but we, the same, the same type of conflict arises, right? Because they're employees of the township, they have the same duty of loyalty and they report to Stephen.
If it's somebody from the township, sure.
Yeah, and so then it's somebody else on the outside. And then of course, you know, if you hire an executive director, I mean, that could be a significant expense on the, the ratepayers.
All right, any other supervisors have questions or comments or any clarification on this issue? If not, the motion was made and seconded, Mr. Partridge had asked for a roll call vote. So I'm going to ask Mr. Nice then to call the roll and vote.
All right. Mr. Partridge?
No.
Ms. Roberts Lightcap?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Alteri?
Yes.
Mr. Moll?
Yes. The motion carries four to one. Mr. Nice will advise the, I guess, municipal authority accordingly and see what Daxton Aides decides to take.
Yes, I, I will let them know and I believe they'll be taking it up at their meeting, at their next meeting.
Okay. Moving on, item, item 11.3, consider approving the solvency fee from relief from charges at a cost of $6,264.13. Mr. Nice, I'm going to be perfectly honest with you, I have no idea what this means. Could you explain this?
Mr. Chairman, this comes up once a year.
Maybe that's why.
Normally, my recommendation is always pretty straightforward, do not do this and it's really easy. However, in light of COVID, I thought I at least need to have a moment and explain it and we ought to at least consider it. So what this works for, we are basically self-insured through the state for our unemployment. And that's what this is revolve, this involves.
Okay, all right.
And so, and what, what's needs to be understood is that this year, we made a decision to furlough two temporary or part-time employees who helped us with crossing guard duties at the school, if you'll remember. And so therefore we ended up doing that and we ended up having to pay, which we, we knew going in, our portion of their unemployment. What also happened this year that, you know, we really hadn't counted on was that we've had some employees who have worked for us in the past who got furloughed from other locations. And that also came back on us. So if they have not been employed by a certain amount, for a certain amount of time at a, at a single location, they actually go back over multiple employers to do that. We don't have many, but we had, we did have one who had happened to, to us in, in, in the township here. Normally, my recommendation is that this cost is way greater than what our expense ever is. And normally I would always say, don't do it. The thing that happened this year was that because we hadn't paid this fee in prior years and didn't pay it for 2020, we did become responsible for those, for that side of it that we ended up having to cover for that gentleman who was laid off from, nothing to do with us, but was, but had worked for us prior. And so that's really where this comes in. And because of COVID, I thought, well, I at least have to have this conversation with you. We've always in the past just kind of said, no, we don't want it. I brought it up under the managers report, told you I didn't think it was a good investment, we moved on. This one was a little different, so I thought we ought to have the conversation and let you all discuss it, ask me any questions that you have. I do believe that it needs to be paid by December 2nd, if we decide to do it.
Do we have any other employees that have left us or working with someone else that we might have to still be responsible? I, I know there's a time limit associated with that, so.
So we, here's what I would say is we've had a couple of people who have retired or we've had a couple of people that have taken other employment. We've had a police officer that's taken other employment. We've got, you know, someone who's left us. I anticipate he's not going to be working from the public work side. Somebody else who's left us that is going to be working. So I, the answer is there's some potential there, there is a risk. And I don't know what the, I don't know how big that risk is, but there is a potential of two or three people that I know of that potentially could fall into this category.
And this is a bigger risk right now because of the uncertainty of the pandemic.
People are being laid off much more easily today than what we've been used to. And so that's what, that's the reason for the conversation.
And liability potentially is more than this fee would be, correct?
Well, always that's the potential. You know, if it's a police officer, this fee would look small. If it's, if it's, you know, one of our interns, the fee's probably close. You know what I'm saying? It's, it, it depends on what they're, what they were doing for us.
What's your, I mean, Steve, should we do it this year? I mean, what's your?
You know, my, my normal answer, like I said, is not to, you know, because I just don't, I, I, I always say you have to buy insurance for the things that are big losses, right? And that's what this is. But for us, we're not an employer who tends, tends to lay people off. We've worked very hard at not doing that. And we work very hard at making sure that, you know, we have good relationships with folks, but we can't control what happens when they leave here and are working someplace else. And so it's the first time that I've had this, like, I don't, I wish I could say for sure, don't. Or I wish I could say, yeah, I think you have to do this. I think it's one of those things that, you know, I needed to present to you and say, we have a possibility that we could be hit harder than $6,264. Is, you know, do we roll the dice and go with it and see what happens? Do I think it would, this isn't a matter of whether I think we could afford to do whatever comes our way, because I think we managed our finances in such a way that, you know, would it possibly mean we had to dig further into fund balance? It might. And so that's the reason why I throw this out. And it doesn't take 100% of our responsibility away. It just helps us for those that we can't, that we don't know. And that's the part that I, it's hard for me to answer that question.
Yeah, okay, Steve.
This is insurance against our unemployment liability, correct?
It is.
Hey, John, my thought is I, I, I would take the risk and just leave this on the table and wouldn't act on it. That, that's, that's one opinion here.
How's the rest of the board feel?
Well, how much did we spend this year for the people that were out?
You know, I don't even know if we've gotten all the bills yet. I know that the one position.
Well, if you leave on your own free will, you don't get unemployment, correct? If you leave on your own?
Well, the problem is here, if somebody leaves us on their own free will, they don't get unemployment from us, but they go and work someplace else. And this is where the issue is. So I work, I work for you and I leave and I go to take another job somewhere and they lay me off. If I haven't worked there the required amount of time to be under their full unemployment requirement, then they go back and look at my prior employer and the township is my prior employer. And so it then becomes on us to have to pay that additional funding because we also were one of the people that paid them. If they haven't been with us long enough, they go back to the employer before that, so it's.
How long are we obligated?
Deployer.
What duration of time that we're obligated to pay for somebody once they leave?
I think it's, I, I don't have the exact date, amount of time, but I believe it's a full five years.
Five years.
And I may be wrong on that, it may only be two, but I, 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 I know that I had a situation in Phoenixville that went back quite a ways.
And this is all under the state's unemployment compensation regulations?
It is. And like I said, normally I, like I'm with Ed, normally I just don't even think we should ever do it because it's not, it's, the, the risk is really low. You know, we tend to have really good employees and, you know, it's, it's just not an issue. And if we do, you know, it's, we're prepared to take care of it. Because of COVID, I thought I just had to bring it to your attention.
I understand.
And Steve, this would be for anybody in 2021 that would.
Correct. If they got laid off in 2020, we would still be responsible.
So Mr. Partridge has suggested that we table this. What, what are the other board members' feelings on this? Do we table it or do we take, do we pay this fee, I guess is the question?
Well, the problem is we have to pay it before the next meeting.
Right. So we've got to decide right now what we want to do.
Because the next meeting is on the 14th, correct?
Correct.
And the bill's due on the, on the 7th. So there's, it's either now or ever. I don't know. I mean, I, I would agree typically you wouldn't want to waste the money. But, but if, if things go the other direction and people get laid off and they worked here in the past, I mean, I, I think $6,000 is going to be eaten up pretty quick. I mean, that's, that's just the way I'm looking at it. But again, I don't, that's just the way I feel. I think it's cheap insurance. And Steve, does that cover how much percentage of their unemployment? Is it 50%, 70%?
I'm not 100% sure. I'm looking here to see if it tells me exactly on this document.
Well, if we have, we have a handful of people that have been left our employment in the last five years. And if they get unemployed and take some kind of job and they get unemployed next year, turn of the year, then we could be obligated for them. And I think it could be more than five, I think it could be more than $6,000. I mean, that's why it's insurance.
You bring up a good point, Mr. Russo, just because with the pandemic may end perhaps soon because of things that are coming, developments and things like that, doesn't mean the economy is going to immediately bounce back. So I know we, you know, may start having vaccines and things like that. We could still be seeing lots of layoffs as the economy struggles to try to recover. So you certainly bring up a good point.
I just, yeah, I just feel $6,000 is cheap, is cheap insurance in my, from my, from my point of view.
Because you can have all the vaccines in the world, right? But it's vaccinations that are going to nip this in the bud and that's what the next hurdle is going to be. So I think that with the fact that they might be on, we might be on the hook for up to five years, anywhere from two to five years, $6,000, I agree with what Mike's saying, is that it is cheap insurance, given the grand scheme of things.
Somebody want to offer a motion?
But what, one thing.
One, one, before, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, I mean, as Steve said, this is not a high-risk situation here. And, and, and then the question, which I think Steve's going to try to answer now, is what's covered under this? So, you know, I, I hear what you guys are saying, but, you know, it is a gamble. I mean, and what does it give us? I guess that's the question that Steve's going to try to answer.
I just looked at $6,000.
When I said five years, the, the document actually says the first four of the last five completed calendar quarters prior to the quarter in which the, which the employee or the claimant has filed for benefits. So it actually is about a year and a half.
Correct. I, I believe it's also a declining percentage during those quarters, isn't it?
I, I don't see it saying that, but.
I'm not 100% sure on that, but five quarters.
It says we're billed dollar-for-dollar basis for all benefits that are charged to us.
Man, I, I think our potential liability could easily be 10 times this if the economy struggles and, and people come back. You know, you, you, okay, we make, this isn't a wise thing to do. The only thing we've lost is 6,200 bucks, you know, not, 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 certainly not. The only thing we've lost is 6,200 bucks, you know, not, 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 certainly not small ton of change, but as Mr. Russo said, it is insurance and, you know.
Well, why don't we, why don't we do this? I mean, why don't we, I mean, if it's only five quarters, that's, that's a year, a little over a year?
It's, yeah, it's about a year and a half the way they do it. It's the first four of the five quarters, not counting the quarter that you're in.
Steve, when's the last time we had to pay?
Well, this year we had to pay because we had somebody who was, fell into that.
Because I, I mean, I recall for our history lesson, two managers, township managers ago, we had to pay a little bit. Even though he left, we weren't responsible. His next job after us, we were responsible for a little bit.
That's correct, Joe.
And number two, you're, Mike, Mike's thinking, maybe he's thinking the same thing I am, but $6,000 out of a $10 million budget is, you know, relatively speaking, for any kind of risk is not a lot.
Right. It's, it's insurance and, and, you know, it is what it is. I mean.
What does it cover though, Steve?
So my understanding is that this. I'm just looking again to make sure I'm getting this right, because there's, there's so many pieces with this. Tells me how to, you're not required to do it.
I mean, if it covered 100%, I hear what you guys are saying, but, you know.
This is not a bill of payment. It doesn't indicate on here what percentage.
You know, and for us to pass something, I know it's not a big amount. I know we have $6 million in the fund balance and this is $6,000. I hear all that. But if we find out later that this thing is miniscule and it hardly covers anything.
I think it's, I think it's, I just kind of looked up the rule as we were sitting here. It's, if there are several base years, so that base year is that five quarters, right? And if the base year, if you're the only base year employer, you pay 100% of the benefit. And I, I forget what the maximum benefit per week is, but I think it's like five, 600 bucks a week right now.
668, I believe.
Okay. And, and so if there are several base year employers, what they do is they'll take a look at the total compensation during that period and assign a percentage. And that's your percentage that you have to pay. So the, the more they work at that new job, the, the lower percentage you are in that, in that timeframe, I think.
So the example that Steve gave early on where somebody didn't work long for us and left and worked somewhere else and, you know, they came back to us. I mean, we wouldn't hardly pay anything for that situation if it's somebody, a long-time employee, then, you know, then, then we're in for a whole thing.
Right.
And, and this covers, and this covers those situations where we're the only, only employer. It, it covers 100% of their unemployment compensation?
I don't think, I don't think it covers if we're the only employer. I think it's an issue of whether there's multiple employers, but maybe I'm misunderstanding that.
We, we don't have any, at least I don't think we have any intention of laying anybody off. So I don't know that that's necessarily a concern for us, that, that we're worried about our liability for our employees that, you know. How concerned are you about this?
Me?
I mean.
I'm not overly concerned, but I, but I, I do think there's always the possibility that it could be greater than this. And because it was that possibility, I felt like I had to bring it before.
I appreciate that.
So we, so we had three people leave in the last two years, Steve?
Well, and we brought the two back.
Police officer.
You know, we brought back the two crossing guards.
Well, we had two, two public works people leave.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we had two public works people.
A police officer left about two years ago.
Yeah.
I, I guess I, I, I guess.
And we have one administrative person that retired.
Thought that person retired.
Yeah, but I, I think if the person goes and gets another job and they get laid off, we could be on the hook.
All right. Poor people. I don't, I don't see this as a big concern now.
If anybody would like to offer a motion to approve this, I guess now's the time to do that. If no one offers that, then we'll consider deciding table and we'll move on.
It's fine with me.
Not hearing anything. Is everybody good with tabling this?
Yes.
Yes.
Then let's move on. Okay. Item 11.4, consider advertising, it's 2020-06, are U and O ordinance? I trust everybody's had a chance to review this. Mr. Russo, have you, I know you were a big proponent.
I thought it, I thought it addressed everything that we talked about last time. It took and put the bird, burn, the elements on the fire sprinkler testing and the back over ventilator, only on people that actually have them in their houses. And then it also, the other things are just basically normal safety issues. So, and there's no, the only people that have to do scoping of the sewer are the commercial establishments, which was I think a concern of, of Tina's. So I think we've addressed everything the way we talked about this week or two weeks ago, actually.
I, I have a question for Mr. Catania. Joe, if we advertise this, can we still make changes or should we discuss those changes now? Because I had just one wording change that I had discussed with Andy today.
You could probably bring it up now, because if it's minor, it's okay. The other question I had is Steve, is it on the fee schedule for the cost of the inspection?
We currently have the fee. I mean, if we're going to change it, I would need to know that. But currently we have a fee that's, I believe, $75.
Fee schedule, it's not on the ordinance?
No, it's on the, it's on the fee schedule. So we need to have it, we need to have it stated that it's part of the fee schedule.
We can change the fee at the turn of the year though, right?
You can, you, you can change it anytime that you pass a resolution changing the fee schedule. If you put it as part of the fee schedule.
How was that fee determined? How was that $75 determined?
Well, my understand, I mean, that's been what's been since I've been here. Based on what we're doing, there's some paperwork time-wise and then obviously sending somebody out to the house to check the different things that are being checked. This is now a little bit more involved.
Right, so fees should go up.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mike had suggested.
I'm hoping that we could keep it without making it go up a ton, but we probably will have to go up.
Mike had suggested 100 and then 50 for a re-inspection.
Right, I just copy what our neighbors do.
But, and then because they've got to go back again the second time, right? They've got to go back in the house. If there's something inside, they've got to physically make an appointment and go back inside.
Yeah, I think a re-inspection is important. A re-inspection fee is important.
Right. Yeah, because if somebody comes in and everything's fine, there's no reason for them to be, what's the word I'm looking for? For them to be, for them to have to pay more if they, if they don't have to come back. But a re-inspection fee should be there because it's taking up more time.
Yeah, and, and Joe gave us that paperwork, I, I think about a year or so ago. I just, I just threw the fees right off the paperwork he gave us. I think it was from Springfield, Joe.
Yeah, that was one of them. Yes.
The. The language I wanted to add had, or changed, I guess, modified, massaged, or whatever you call it. There was an item eight that talked about public sidewalks or curbs within the property boundaries are in good condition and without breaks, voids, deterioration or tripping hazards. I had asked Andy, you know, do we have a better standard to, to really follow there? Because he, he had mentioned that he sometimes gets pushback from owners or real estate agents and, and things like that. And we don't really have a standard definition of tripping hazard. So what I had suggested to Andy and discussed with him, which he seemed to be in agreement with, was that we change it, and, and again, I want to make sure that we get all the sidewalks that are around the property too, obviously, not just the sidewalks that are on the property. You know, residents and businesses are responsible for sidewalks in front of their property in the public right of way. So what I wanted to say was public sidewalks and curbs within the property boundaries, including sidewalks adjacent to the property within the public right of way. And then we go back to are in good condition without breaks, voids, deterioration or tripping hazards. And then I said, consistent with the requirements of ASTMF 1637-19. That is the voluntary consensus standard for walkways. It references and defines exactly what is things like breaks and tripping hazards and things like that. Just to give Andy something to rely upon to say that, hey, this is a tripping hazard because it meets this standard.
John, that's your favorite chapter of that book, right?
That, it, it, the standard's a three-page standard, but yes, that, that's constantly referenced as the standard for tripping and falling and things like that. Yes.
I think that's fine.
Okay.
So we just have to make sure that the township then maintains a copy of that ATSM standard and that it's available for the public to view.
Yeah, like I said, it's two or three pages. I had sent a PDF to Andy. I can, you know, we, so, I mean, I can send more. We can just have it there available and can send it to people so they know what it says. It's, it's, it's a very common standard for this type of thing.
It's really better to be defined. That way there's no argument.
Right. John, can you send me that language?
Absolutely, Joe. I'll forge over my changes.
Okay.
Then Steve, this advertises for what, 20 days, 30 days?
No. Joe, I think this only requires.
One, one.
One advertisement.
One notice. You need more than, oh my God. Less than, less than 30, more than seven, something like that, or 14. I don't know. But it doesn't matter. The, the next, Rich, what is it? Now I'm, I'm having a brain freeze.
Yeah, as long as it's, geez, so why? It's either, it's either less than 30 and more than seven, or less than 60 and more than seven. Either way, I'll be fine if, as long as.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're fine.
So that's fine. We can enact it at the turn of the year, right?
Yeah, it's got to be more than seven. It's never, it's never been an issue with too long.
Yeah.
It's, it's always make sure we get it within the seven.
That makes sense.
True.
Or after seven, I'm sorry.
Yeah, most likely it'll be before you at the December meeting if we get everything changed and done.
That's correct.
And then we're ready to go.
Yes.
That's great.
Does everyone want to give me a motion?
Go ahead, Mike.
I'd like to consider, I'd like to approve the ordinance 2020-06, U and O ordinance, with the modifications suggested by the chairman related to the new standard that defines the sidewalk curbing and that, that standard. And that's my motion.
A second to advertise that.
Okay. Right. This is a motion just to advertise or not approving your.
Correct, correct. Yes, correct. But, but just with those caveats.
All right, Mr. Catania, I already sent you the language change, so.
Okay.
My motion is made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. To approve the advertising ordinance 2020-06, are you and O ordinance? Any further questions or discussions on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Fantastic. Moving right along. All right. Next on the agenda is consider approving the advertising ordinance 2020-07, which is the Act 44 Real Estate Tax Abatement. And again, this is for the township portion of the taxes only for, for fire company volunteers. I know we have talked about this. Joe, can you, I know you had some notes in there today. Can you give us just this, a thumbnail of what the ordinance will say as far as service and things like that?
Well, this is not as simple as the U and O. The, there's two statutes, one that's current and there's one that goes into effect the end of December. I think it's December 29th. And the real difference with that is, I sort of mentioned, prior to December 29, it was limited to 20% of the township tax. You'd call it a forgiveness, call it a credit or whatever. On December 29th, the legislature changed it to say up to 100% credit. So, and it applies to volunteer, well, it would apply to our volunteers at the fire company. Chief Everloff gave us a breakdown of how someone would qualify. And that's what I sent you out. He had, the person might have to be a homeowner.
Right.
So number one, I don't know how many people we're talking about. Two, it would have to be a member of the fire company and must be listed as the owner of the property. Only one abatement per member. And then they have basically saying that they need 80 hours of a year of volunteer service. But they can do all, all different kinds of things. And the things that they're mentioning in there, which is like fundraising and those sort of things, that's, that's okay by the statute, but it's not required.
Right.
But that's, but that's what the things they have down. They would approve it and it would have to come to us and then we'd have to approve the list to get the reduction. What I wrote down was, is what I think Steve sent me not too long ago. And it's, that's where it mentions can receive 20% reduction of township portion of the real estate tax. No reduction of school board tax, obviously. The reduction would be due to the volunteer status of the fire company. That's, if it was a volunteer fire company, then, then it would apply to that.
Joe, when we advertise this, do we define the percentage at that time?
Yeah, and I'm glad you brought that up. And the statute says we can do it by ordinance or resolution. I would suggest resolution, not an ordinance. It's easy, easier to modify and easier to, you still, oh, and this one, you need 30 days notice. Says in the statute.
I think it gives incentive for people to join the, the ranks when we're having, I'm getting volunteers. I, I think that's, that's a good idea because it's going to cost us a lot more to go hire firefighters.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, and that's, that's what the purpose of it is. It's to give them an incentive. The only thing I didn't know, and I don't think we need to know it, but I don't know how many volunteers it would apply to.
So Joe, if we did it by resolution, then we don't need to advertise it, right?
No, we do.
Oh, we still do. Okay.
Yeah, you still do. Either way, you got to advertise for 30 days.
And, and, you know, but, and we have to define the percentage upfront. And it could be up to 100%. We could say it's 64%. I mean, we can, we could say whatever, up to 100%. And currently it, it only provides for up to 20%, right?
Yeah. And if you make, if you make it 100%, you might get a lot of volunteers from those listed homes, the $3 million houses.
Yeah, one, well, one thing I would, yeah.
I don't think that's happening.
I only envision this as 100%, but I guess that's just, you know.
Yeah, obviously this is just the new town tax. It has nothing.
Yeah, so I, I need to know what you're thinking on the percentage.
Yeah, I'm 100. I've always been 100.
I'm 100, I'm 100. I mean, we need people, we need good people. And if the people want to volunteer, we, it should be a reward.
Yeah, and Mike said it. I mean, that's exactly what this is, is for, is to incentivize people to volunteer. And it's not, hey, sign on the dotted line. Yeah, my taxes are abated now. It's great. I mean, the fire company has some, some requirements in here that people are going to have to work for, you know, so.
And it's a, it's a tax credit for an active volunteer.
Right.
It's a credit.
The, the longer our company stays as a volunteer company, the better it is for all of our taxpayers, because just it, it would be, it, it's astronomically expensive to run the fire company. We had to do it as a municipal service. It would make our police department look cheap. So I, I, anything we can do to encourage folks to volunteer their time and serve it at a high level and continue to make that fire company volunteer, I think that, you know, I'm all for that.
And Mr. Chairman, we have to encourage all our, all our residents to, during this fundraising for the fire department to write a check for this volunteer fire company.
Absolutely.
Yes, definitely for your fire department.
Buy a wreath for every window of your house, you know.
John, what was that statistic you, you quoted the last time? Of the, what was it, five years ago, there was 300,000 volunteer firemen and now?
Yeah, statewide, and now we're down to about 50,000 statewide. So i- it's a huge problem. And again, I mean, you just think about the size of our police department and we'd need a similar size fire department if we had to pay for it as a municipal service. Well, okay, you can look at the cost and, and their vehicles are a little bit more money than our police vehicles. So, you know, you, you'd be talking about taking your taxes and, and multiplying it by one and a half or two to pay for a fire company. So I, I think anything that we can do. You know, you'd be talking about taking your taxes and, and multiplying it by one and a half or two to pay for a fire company. So I, I think anything that we can do. And I don't think this is going to result in a vast number of people that are going to be, you know, it's not going to be a big tax liability for us as a township, I don't think, because. You know, they'll even tell you half the members, volunteers probably come from outside the township. So they're not eligible. We're not waiving school district taxes. We have no ability to waive county taxes or schools, just our tax. And it has to be a homeowner. I mean, if you're an eighteen-year-old living in your parents' house and you're a volunteer, well, you're not going to get the, your parents aren't going to get the tax abatement because they're not the volunteer. But for those that can and are willing to volunteer their time, and if we can get a couple of new volunteers with this, you know, it, it's a, I think it's worthwhile.
Joe, is there, besides naming the percentages, or anything else that? Is, I mean, is this thing ready to be advertised, or is there any more work that needs to be done to it?
Well, I, I, all I need is, I mean, it, it's, I just have to prepare the resolution, which wouldn't take me long. I'd file, I'll follow along with what Chief Everloff gave me for the standards. And then I'll just follow the. The statute language and the resolution to give them the credit. I might have to talk with Steve, though. I just want to be clear, or maybe Rich, on. You know, the prac, the practical implementing this, like how, how are we gonna? I, I know what it's going to say, but what does that actually mean?
So are you saying, so you're saying we're not ready to average, to pass the advertisement tonight?
I, I mean, I could have it right. It's, since we have thirty days, it's not going to get approved till next year anyway. Not that it makes that much of a difference. It'll go out before the tax bills go out, but they would have to do this service. This would apply to twenty twenty-one, correct?
Yes.
Yep. Yeah, they can't get credit for this year.
I mean, if you have enough to credibly advertise, I don't know why we wouldn't do it tonight, honestly.
Yeah, you can do it. I mean, you can do it with the language. And if you're giving me a hundred percent, I can do the hundred percent. And like I said, it's a, it's a resolution.
Right. So we're not, we, we don't want to approve the advertising of the ordinance. We want to approve an advertisement of a resolution.
Correct.
Under Act forty-four Real Estate Tax Abatement. Okay.
Yeah, I think we go that route. I think it makes sense. Just have them go forward with it today. We know it's going to be a hundred percent, and then Joe can put the rest of the information that he needs.
Could you, you want to put that into motion, Mr. Altieri?
Uh, sure. I will make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the advertising of, of, I guess. I'll say resolution.
Right.
Twenty twenty, I don't know if it'll be oh seven or not, but.
It'll, based on what I'm hearing, it'll be a twenty twenty-one.
If we're doing. Haven't I said twenty twenty-one, oh one? Is that what I'm saying?
Uh, probably not, but we'll get the number.
All right, so my motion is to consider approving advertising ordinance twenty twenty, ordinance twenty twenty-one.
Resolution.
Resolution.
Wow, this is bad for me. All right, so I'm going to start that over again there, Mr. Chairman. You would have thought I learned from Mike Russo, and I guess I didn't get this one down. Consider approving the advertising of resolution related to Act forty-four Real Estate Tax Abatement. Township portion only for the fire company volunteers at a rate of one hundred percent of township tax.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made by Supervisor Altieri, seconded by Supervisor Russo to consider advertising a resolution under Act forty-four Real Estate Tax Abatement for the township portion only for fire company volunteers at a hundred percent rate relief of township taxes. Any further questions or discussions on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of advertising, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Motion carries unanimously. Fantastic. Good, good. That was a good, we, we worked on that a long time. I'm glad Steve's finally pulled that together. All right. Next on the agenda, consider hiring two public works employees to fill two vacancies in that department. Mr. Neese.
So move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Which was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Russo to approve hiring two public works employees to fill the vacancies in the public works department. Does anybody need any explanation from Mr. Neese on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I think we ought to at least put the names on the record that we're going to do. So if I can just give the two names, and I assume that the two motioners will accept that as an amendment.
Sure.
It's.
Yes.
Douglas Kohler, K O L E R, and Gregory Archer. And both of these will be contingent upon passing all background checks and drug testing.
So move for approval.
Second.
Okay, well, the motion that was made, I guess the, the motion was made by Supervisor Partridge and seconded by Supervisor Russo again. Including the names that were read by Mr. Neese, subject to them passing all the required tests and things like that. Any further questions and discussions on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Excellent. Consider approving the land agreement associated with the tree vitalized grant as approved by the township solicitor. Mr. Neese.
So this agreement was sent to the township solicitor to review. There is a few blanks that we still need to fill in. However. Based on it, there's a couple of things that I want the board to be aware of. It does give the tree vitalizer, the state, the, the, the group that's working with them the opportunity to come on our property and review what we're doing. And so, I mean, it's public property. We would let them on anyhow, so it's, I don't see it as any issue. We do have an accountability to them. And so I just wanted, and, and Mr. Catania, you may have other comments related to it, but I, but that's basically what it's about. It is for the grant that we've applied for with tree vitalized.
Can you just explain what tree vitalize is with the grant? Can you remind us what the grant is?
Yeah, so th- this is a grant that I believe. I think it was two meetings ago, it may have been three, that you approved a supplying for this grant. It's related to basically getting trees to plant, and we're going to be planting them in the. We call it part of a, a, a career park. I mean, I'm sorry, Gable Park. It's, it's the area between Ellis Avenue and the houses that back up to Ellis Avenue off of, is, is it Elgin?
Elgin, yes.
Yeah, Elgin there. There's, there's a pathway that goes through there. And we've been talking, if, if everybody remembers, I think it was last summer storm, we lost about six trees out of there. And so this was, this is an opportunity for us to kind of start to replant that area, fill in some more additional trees. And, and do that. And we've taken this grant along with the Pico Green Regions Grant to try to tackle that project in twenty twenty-one.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to approve the land agreement associated with the tree vitalized grant as approved by the township solicitor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts Lightcap to approve item eleven point seven, subject to the township solicitor's review. Is there any further questions or discussions on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, next on the agenda is item eleven point eight. This was added. This is consider approving a request from Newtown Edgemont Little League for a stormwater waiver. Let me see if I can couch this since I've been somewhat involved with this. Newtown Edgemont Little League is, that they have at the top of the hill, they have their snack bar concession area, which is sort of like an L-shaped. They want to fill in the L, if you will, with some new bathrooms. They're using this downtime, I guess, with the pandemic to, to do a lot of work up there. And that's one of the things they're proposing, as I understand it. They have some volunteer labor and materials and things like that to get this done. They have been working with Andy for the structural components of this and the ADA accessibility of this, making sure you have an ADA accessible route. Now, since they are creating additional impervious surface, they are subject to our stormwater regulations. In and of itself, the size of the addition, if you want to call it that, is less than what's required under our ordinance. However, our ordinance talks about a cumulative. I guess a, an accumulation of, of impervious surfaces over a period of time. And since twenty thirteen, they have accumulated additional services. So the accumulated sum of all their other improvements, I guess, puts us over the stormwater requirement. And Eileen is still in the line, I see, so she could probably explain this if we needed. So. What the Little League is looking for is simply a waiver of having to go through stormwater requirements, considering it's for the Little League and, you know, they're doing a lot of this for volunteer. They do have a professional architect and engineer designing the facility itself. But they don't want to have to do a site plan, I guess, and, and build stormwater facilities and things like that. So I think it's a very minor amount. Eileen, if you want to jump in and enlighten us as far as if you know the sizes and things like that?
Does Steve, Steve, do you recommend? You recommend this for approval?
Well, here's what I would say. I, I mean, I understand the Little League's concerned about having to do full stormwater. One of the things that we, what I, and Eileen could probably speak to this a little bit better. We did, when we built the stormwater facility that we did up on the hill, we took into account their addition of the.
Pavilion.
The Lightning Pavilion, I think is what it was called. And, and so that was taken into account. This is, in addition to that, one thought I had was, do we just potentially say, ask them to do something like rain barrels, but we're also doing the, we're doing a rain garden up there as a demonstration rain garden to help improve stormwater as well. And what I don't know is if Eileen's had a, a chance to be able to know whether that rain garden would compensate for that additional or not. I, you know, we haven't really talked about that.
And I can just chime in that I don't have the specifics as far as the, where the rain garden is proposed or what its size is. So I, I believe it's certainly possible that it could be incorporated. Can't imagine why it wouldn't, so.
I, I lean correctly if I'm wrong, but the size of this addition in it by itself does not trigger a, a stormwater requirement under our ordinance, correct?
All by itself, it would not. It's under, it's four hundred square feet, as I understand it, although I haven't seen a plan, but the threshold is five hundred.
That's what I thought. So the only reason they're, they're required to get the waiver or, or provide stormwater abatement is because of the fact that this other, this other pavilion that they did, which actually we've already included in the stormwater system that, that was done for the field, correct?
That, that's correct.
I'd suggest we give them the waiver. I mean, the bathrooms there are atrocious, atrocious. And, I mean, we do have a lot of people there and we should have nice bathrooms. I mean, the Petticoat League's bathrooms make them look very bad.
I'll second your motion, Mike.
Okay, motion was made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor Partridge to approve the request from the Newtown Edgemont Little League for a stormwater waiver. Any further questions or discussions for board members on this item?
Can we ask them to do those rain gardens then? Can we make that as part of this motion? For them to look at if a rain garden, I'm just, I'm just conscious of all of the stormwater management issues we have. You know, throughout the township, and I appreciate it. My kids all went through now, and, you know, my husband was one of the ones who mowed the lawn or whatever. You know, the volunteer, it's all volunteer, and I understand that. But I think we also have to be conscious of the fact that, Eileen, you are saying though, that, that, that the part that they're doing is de minimis. It won't put them over. I mean, I get it. We, as a township, helped them when we did the stormwater management along that, that ridge line. So you think, Eileen, that between that and the work that they're doing there, it's not going to cause any more issues for the heights?
The snack bar and the positioning of it, I believe, does drain toward Bishop Hollow. I don't think we're talking about an impact to the heights. If that answers your question. And yes, if this was the first project they were proposing, the four hundred square feet would be an exemption.
Okay.
Under the ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Grande has his hand raised.
Yeah, I see Darren's got on, online. I've been watching him.
I just think this, I just think it's for the kids. The bathrooms need to be improved.
I agree. I agree, Mike. I'm, I'm, I've got three kids. I'm not against kids.
But are you?
I just wanted to be sure.
Tina, are you asking for a requirement? Are you going to?
No, no, I was just, there was a, there was a, a question about a rain garden, so I thought maybe if a rain garden can help.
Well, as I understand it, we're putting in the rain guard. The township's putting in rain guard, correct?
The EAC is doing that.
Oh, okay. Got it. Got it. Okay.
Put my engineer hat on right now, and we're talking about for their development. It's, it's, it's less than five one hundredth of a cubic feet per second of runoff. It's not.
I understand. I just felt like I had to ask the questions because we've had, you know, every meeting, stormwater management comes up, so I'm just, just making sure that we're not going to add to it by waiving that. And, and Darren, I'm not against the kids or no, I'm just asking the question. That's, that's my.
You want to allow Mr. Grande the opportunity?
Do, do we need, do we need? I don't want to, I don't want to waste any more time. We're going to prove it. We approve it. I don't want to, I don't want to.
Okay, that, that's fine.
We don't need to talk about this. I mean, this meeting's getting to be, you know, last meeting was really late. At least this meeting, we can get out of here hopefully in a reasonable time.
Motion was made and seconded.
Sorry to, sorry to extend the conversation, Mike. I'm just asked a question.
Our motion was made and seconded. The question's been called. All those in favor of motion to waive the, the, approve the request to waive the stormwater. Please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. You're good to go, Darren. Appreciate what you're doing and we will. It's good. All right, now we added, in the interest of Mr. Russo's comments, we added one thing, eleven point nine, and this was to approve the additional services for the Clear Book Road culvert replacement. Those services include performing a construction observation, process pay request from general contractor, and evaluate repair needed on the exploratory excavation by the contractor, all that to support what we had requested as far as the, the form liner for this culvert. So StanTech has said the additional money, the scope would be to meet the, or the cost to meet that scope would be thirty-four hundred dollars.
So move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
I can't.
Which is made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Russo to approve the StanTech scope for additional services.
Can you not hear me?
I heard Mike first.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
It was about the same.
It's fine.
I'm going to hold off and let you make the seconds from now.
I don't care. I don't care. I'm, I'm not that, I'm not that delicate. I'm not that delicate.
No, no, but he did, he did not hear you the first time earlier tonight.
Sorry. Okay, motion is made and seconded to approve the additional scope of services, the amount of thirty-four hundred dollars for StanTech for the Clear Book Road culvert replacement. Any further questions or discussions on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we have nothing listed on our old business. Under item thirteen point one, we have resolutions of legislative action. This is resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-four. Closing out our community conservation partnership for the Greenways Grant. Mr. Partridge, do you have a copy of that?
Yes, I do.
Mind reading it?
No, I won't mind. Resolution number twenty twenty dash thirty-four. Resolution closing out community conservation partnerships grant project BRC dash TAG dash twelve dash one thirty-eight. Now therefore be it resolved by the supervisors of Newtown Township that A, the project was completed in accordance with the grant agreement. B, all project expenditures have been made and were in accordance with the grant agreement. C, the plan and related materials are acceptable to the township of Newtown. D, the plan and related materials will be used to guide further recreation and conservation decisions adopted this twenty-third day of November two thousand twenty by the Newtown Board of Supervisors. And that's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, somebody seconded a motion.
I just seconded it.
John, you must not be here.
I didn't hear you, Lynn. I'll turn on my, motion is made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Altieri to approve resolution twenty twenty thirty-four, closing out the community conservation partnership for the Greenways Grant. Any further questions or discussions on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have no additional business listed. Next on the agenda would be board comment. Would any board member like to make a comment?
The only comment I'll have is that the amount of time we spend discussing how much time is too much time. Only comment I'll have is that the amount of time we spend discussing how much time is too much time, is time we could be spent on actual issues. So I think that if someone feels like they need to ask a question, they should be able to ask the question. Or if we want someone from the public to ask questions or provide additional information, they should be able to provide additional information. I came from the school board, where these meetings went until ten thirty, eleven o'clock at night. And if we're doing stuff that all of us want information on, just let it be done. That's it. You know, I'm not, I'm not arguing with anyone. I'm not saying anyone's at fault. It's just that it gets brought up a lot. Uh, and and, you know, no one forces to be here. So if it takes a long time, it takes a long time.
So, note to Mr. Altieri.
I'll make a comment. Uh, Lynn, I respectfully hear you. But also, I think the meetings should be efficient. Um, especially where there's issues that are clear cut, to the point, efficient meetings to our business and adjourn. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Yeah, and naturally, I'm going to have a rebuttal to that one and and say that what is clear to some people.
I'm not going to argue back and forth, Lynn. I just want to.
I'm not giving you the opportunity. You stated your opinion. I'm going to state my opinion and say that.
You already did.
And and I'm going to say another opinion. I'm going to state another opinion, Ed, so you get to listen to it. And what I'm going to say is that what might be clear for some people might not be clear to others. And so if someone has a follow up question, we as colleagues doing the business of this community deserve the respect for each other to to ask the questions and get the information wanted. And 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 we can all take that at that.
I think we should respect each other and have efficient meetings. That's my last comment.
All right, I'm afraid to ask. Any other comments? Okay, good. Um, that brings us to the public comment portion of the meeting. Uh, again, reminding any members of the public who wish to speak that this is uh, for general comments and not for items on the agenda. I've been uh, notified that there are no public comments in the township mailbox. So if there's any members of the public that are online or listening that would like to speak, please raise your hand and be acknowledged. All right, seeing no hands raised, then uh, we are in adjournment. I appreciate everybody participating this evening. Our next meeting is Monday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty. I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and uh, enjoy, folks. Be safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you now.